All right, we will call the 7:00 PM public hearing to order. This is an application on behalf of Sarjak Partners LLC requesting modifications to the existing conditions of approval for Special Development District Number 97 located at 21 Brace Road and known as Firehouse Square. We'll call Ms. LaBrow.
Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Ms. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Davidoff.
Here.
Mr. Dodge.
Here.
Ms. Fay.
Here.
Ms. Kerrigan.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney on the phone.
Here.
Mr. Wenigred.
Here.
And Mr. Williams.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. LaBrow. Presentation from the applicant.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Reiner. I'm the attorney for Sarjak Partners. The applicant, I know that you all have a package that's dated December 1st, 2017, so I'll try to be brief and not be redundant from that. A little bit of history on 21 Brace Road, which I'm sure you're all aware. 21 Brace Road was the old Firehouse. It was sold in 1997, I believe, to Ted Carrier, who then developed it. And between 1996 and 1997, there were Special Development District applications filed. And the end result of that was that the current basement, which is the subject of tonight's application, could be used for retail and office space, for antiques, and not for personal services. And what we're asking is to have the basement space used for a yoga studio. A woman by the name of Diane Couture, who is a West Hartford Center resident, is the proposed lessee. She has numerous, already signed up, people who are from the West Hartford Center area or are people who work in West Hartford Center to come to her yoga studio. So we feel that the change that we're asking for fits the needs of the business community today, as opposed to what was decided in 1997. We also feel that the proposed use is in harmony with the overall business plans and strategies of West Hartford and the center in particular. The amount of space that she's taking, about 50 people could come in. However, given the mat size for the yoga studio, including the instructor, she estimates that it would be roughly, not roughly, exactly, based on her architect, 28 people could be the maximum number of people. The times that she would be proposing to use the yoga studio are not completely known, but it's, it, these types of businesses typically, they're before work, they're during lunch, and they're after work. So I don't really anticipate there being any load to any kind of parking use, especially since it's expected that everyone is going to either be a resident in that area and walking distance, or currently work there. And we did hold, we did send out letters dated December 16th, 2017, to all of the area residents, and we held an open house for questions on January 3rd, 2018, from 5:00 to 7:00. No one showed up. We were, however, in our letter. We did state what the proposed use was, so all the neighbors were fully aware of what we were looking to do in the, in the space.
That's, okay. Attorney Reiner, so are there questions on the, for the applicant?
I do just-
Okay, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you. Just one follow-up. Is there a written outreach report, or, you know, is there, I was just going there, we get to our meetings and there are a lot of papers on the table, other than just your file from December. Is there-
An outreach to the neighbors?
Yeah.
Yes, we sent a letter, that's what I was describing. We sent a letter December 16th, 2017, to all the neighbors, inviting, explaining what the use was going to be, and then also inviting anyone who had further questions to either contact us and/or to come to an open house on January 3rd, 2018, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And we received no correspondence, we received no emails, no calls, and no one showed up to, to the open house.
And in the December material, in the December 1st, 2017, was the proposed use identified in the material?
To it be a yoga studio? Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A quick question. Back in the late 90s, is there any particular reason why they said no personal services would be allowed in the basement?
I do not know. We tried to look and see what the reasoning was. I do not know. I do know that now, when you look at West Hartford Center, it's personal services or restaurants pretty much are the landscape at this point. Why they even had the word "antiques" as a use for the basement is something that obviously we wouldn't expect to see in West Hartford Center today, in today's world.
Thank you, Ms. Kerrigan, Mrs. Kerr-
Hi.
Hi.
Attorney Reiner. There we go. Just in general, do you expect to have it occupied in the weekends, or parking use when it's kind of busy in the center?
I would expect weekends, again, typical of yoga studios, are late morning type of thing. They're going to have classes when there's a need for it. I, I think that, as I said, the anticipated client base would be residents in the, in the neighborhood and people who work there. So I would expect on Saturdays, it would be residents who want to come on a Saturday or Sunday. I would expect it to be not as early morning as Monday through Friday, but I, I do know that they anticipate to have classes on the weekend, yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Fay. Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Attorney Reiner, there was a email from our building department on December 29th, talking about, first, the plumbing issue that has been resolved, but there was another comment, and I'll just read it so you can comment on it. If the STD was submitted to allow the space to be used as something else, parentheses meaning the use changes as defined by the building code, the facilities count currently in the space and accessibility of the space may become an issue that would need to be addressed.
That's the number of 50. If there was further discussion, then the number of 50 occupants would then become the issue. And that's why I brought up the, the number 50, and that 28 was the maximum that would be at the facility at any one time.
With respect to accessibility issues?
That's already been addressed. The fire marshal's been there, the building department's looked at it. No one has any issue with accessibility, that I'm aware of. In fact-
I didn't see anything in our materials, I just wanted to get that on the record.
We did have, we did have the fire marshal there, and there was, it was approved, and the building department has seen the plans, and it was approved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel, is the space currently vacant?
It is.
And how long has it been vacant? Do you know, roughly?
Yes. It, we had some plumbing issues, as was mentioned, back in June, July, the, the prior tenant moved out, and so it's been vacant since then.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. So are you doing renovation, or will you be doing renovations soon to convert it to a studio? I mean, there's, are there-
Well, the first thing that we had to do was, was take care of the plumbing issues, which has been done. Then we would finish the space, which, at this point, is, is really just the floors and painting is pretty much what's, what remains to be done for, for any use at the, at the premises. That would be the first step.
Are there restrooms down there, too? Or are there-
There are, there are restrooms, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, is there a, we need to check the sign-up sheet to see whether anyone has signed up. And if, it doesn't look like there's many people here, but if there's anybody that would like to come and speak to this application? Nobody? It's empty? Okay. So, and there's nobody in the audience that would like to speak? Okay. With that, I will read into the record, "Letter dated January 8th, 2018, from TPZ recommending approval, and letter dated January 19th, 2018, from DRAF, also recommending approval." Are there any further questions for the applicant? No? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
And we'll see you soon.
Yep.
Yep.
From where though?
So from, I think, does Tropica connect?
Yeah. Oh, it's Tropica. Tropica comes from the Park River.
Right.
And the Park River goes underground and goes down to, um, down to Connecticut.
Where does it go underground?
I don't know where, I don't know where the tunnel begins. But it goes up, um, I remember them working on that project when I first came here in eighty, um, they were working on it and kind of the Mark Wayne house, all in that area off of, um, Farmington Avenue, they were putting stuff underground, there's stuff underground, um, further south from where Elmwood, it's all part of that giant project. They did have to be flown home.
I think they created it, you know, but it was, I don't know why I saw your report. It's a view of time from where I do, like, it's something for that. Was you guys ever going to the end of the highway when you were here?
Yes.
Remember Route Nine was supposed to get connected?
Oh, yeah.
So you can go through the monastery back there?
Yep.
And then there's a highway there, go on Woods, and then all of a sudden you're in middle.
Yeah. 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 Um, we've had a couple of overnights with the one down here in Monroe. My, uh, son-in-law's brother was his neighbor. And so girlfriend got married, they left, called us overnight. Yeah. They stayed overnight and we didn't, okay. For calling. And, uh, when we go down to DC this next time, uh, Olivia, her husband has to go with you. Saturday night, so we're gonna stay. They both liked to wallow in it. All that serious. 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 I'm gonna ask you one. You figure when you're gonna ask your answer? Just take him to the playground. And people are kind of puzzled because, you know, he's got that ungainly toddler walk, but he looks like a two-year-old to me, is there something wrong with him? I'm sure. That's a big guy. He's a dad, a big guy. He's, um, he is six-six and it was, I mean, he's not a football player, but he's, he's not a, he's a kid. Yeah. Oh. Yeah. Where are they, are they? Um, all his parents are in, Alyssa and Will are in Monroe. So they're about an hour, fifteen away. But it means getting up. Yeah. There before Alyssa has been a long day. Fortunately, Will, uh, works. Yeah. Okay.
Call the council meeting to order, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. One second.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wasn't slamming it, honest.
Your full service, you do it all, take care of the door.
Roll call, Ms. LeBrow.
Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Ms. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Davidoff.
Here.
Mr. Dodge.
Here.
Ms. Fay.
Here.
Ms. Kerrigan.
Here.
Mr. Sweeney. Okay, Mr. Wenigrad.
Here.
And Mr. Williams.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. LeBrow, number four, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the minutes of the town council meeting, January ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number five is public forum, I, this is for comment, for people, uh, on something on the agenda that's not subject to the public hearing, and there's very little on the agenda, so I don't think there's anybody signed up. And is there anybody here that would like to speak? No. Okay, uh, we will go on to, uh, number six, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I move that we place items thirteen through eighteen on the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number seven, Ms. Kerrigan.
I move approval of an application on behalf of Sarjack Partners LLC requesting modifications to the existing conditions of approval for special development district number ninety-seven, located at Twenty-One Brace Road and known as Firehouse Square.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, we just had a brief public hearing on, uh, this, uh, the application, uh, and, uh, this is to convert an empty space in the bottom of the, uh, Twenty-One Brace to a yoga studio, uh, and it was approved for retail or antique stores in nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight, and that is the little background, uh, and this would be, um, a yoga studio for, uh, up to fifty people, but twenty-eight is probably reasonable with, with the mat space, from what I understand. And, um, with that, is there anybody that would like to talk to this? So I want to thank the applicant for their, uh, creative use of this space, I think this will be a, oh, I'm sorry, Leon, I didn't see you. Uh, you can comment after, uh, go ahead, you go, you go, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, the only thing I'd like to say is, uh, that this application basically is, uh, going to be able to take advantage of the standards we currently have in the center with respect to, uh, parking and, and things of that nature. So it was something that was caught up in a time warp and it's now basically gonna be in the twenty-eighteen era with respect to, uh, uses for that space.
Thank you, Ms. Davidoff, and I think this is a wonderful amenity to add to people rep, potential residential that's in the center or maybe will be adding to, added to the center over time on a quality-of-life, um, kind of use, so I think this is a good blend with the other uses that are around it, and, um, and I'm excited, and I don't know if you'll be, I don't think goats are allowed in there, but if you did, I would, I would be there, no, but, um, but I, I think it's great, it's a great news, it's a big thing.
It's a huge thing.
So, anyway, I'm, I'm excited to support the application. Uh, any other comments? With that, we will do a roll call, Ms. LeBrow.
Yes.
Ms. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Davidoff.
Yes.
Mr. Dodge.
Yes.
Ms. Fay.
Yes.
Ms. Kerrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney.
Yes.
Mr. Wenigrad.
Yes.
And Mr. Williams.
Yes.
It's unanimously approved.
Thank, thank you, Ms. LeBrow, uh, no new business, we were, we'll go on to reports from the town manager, but I'm gonna preface it by saying, um, Mr. Hart, our town manager's, um, mom passed away and the funeral is tomorrow, so he will, uh, obviously is, is away, and I just want to, um, tell him, uh, that all of our thoughts and prayers are with, uh, his family during this very, very difficult time. So, uh, with that, we have, um, Mr. Ledwith with us, which is a wonderful treat, and, um, and you have a brief report from the town manager.
I do, thank you, Mayor. Um, so we've issued, uh, copies of the town manager's report, so everybody should have that, and that will also be online in the, under the town manager's website as well. And he asked me to highlight a couple of things in this month's report. Uh, under council business and meetings, we have two council committee meetings coming up later this week, we have the community planning and physical services committee meeting tomorrow morning, January twenty-fourth at eight AM in room three twelve, and then we have the human services committee on Thursday morning, January twenty-fifth at eight AM in room three twelve. Uh, under staff reports, a couple of things I'd like to highlight, under the January eleventh, twenty-eighteen bond sale, back in December, the council did, um, approve the finance director and town manager to issue bonds, we did issue thirteen million dollars of general obligation bonds at a true interest cost of two-point-five-seven-seven percent. In addition, the town will receive a bond premium, premium of three-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand dollars, this is great news, uh, we received eight competitive bids for this bond issuance, uh, and this, uh, issuance rate of two-point-five-seven-seven percent is well under the two-point-six-two percent rate that we had last year when we issued seventeen million dollars worth of bonds. And these bonds will be used to finance various capital improvement projects throughout town. Um, we're excited about the police chiefman, police chief recruitment, uh, that, uh, process has officially kicked off as of last week, so we have posted that position, uh, both locally and nationally. Um, I brought copies of our brochure, if anyone would like to see it, um, but you can see that on our website as well. Um, we will be posting that position through the month of February, uh, ideally we'll be interviewing towards the end of February, early March, uh, with the first round of interviews, which will be comprised of members of our staff, uh, as well as a separate committee of outside police chiefs who will interview that first round of candidates as well. Um, from there, we will identify a number of finalists to move forward to the second round of interviews, which will take place later in March, and, uh, ideally we'll have a finalist, um, around the first part of April. And if we go outside, we, uh, envision this position being filled by June first of twenty-eighteen. If it's an internal candidate, we see that happening much sooner than that. Uh, in terms of, uh, some public hearings we have coming up, we have the, uh, CDBG public hearings, uh, it, it is anticipated that the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development will be allocating approximately eight-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars in community development block grant program funds to the town of West Hartford for the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen fiscal year. So we've scheduled two public hearings during which interested parties can learn more about our CDBG programs and make public comment on the town's use of those funds. Those meetings will take place on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, from six to seven o'clock at night at Elmwood Community Center, and then another hearing on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, um, from five to six PM right here in Town Hall in room two seventeen. Uh, Christmas tree collection is now over, um, so that was, uh, we had, DPW had completed three sweeps, uh, throughout town, and we had several snow and ice events throughout that time period, so it was a little bit challenging this year. Um, however, if anyone still has their tree up and needs to dispose of it, they can bring it down to D, the, uh, DPW Recycling Drop-Off Center, that's Monday through Friday, eight AM till four PM. Um, in terms of outside agencies, the Department of Transportation will be holding a public information meeting on February seventh at seven PM, uh, in the Town Hall Auditorium, um, and this is for anyone who's interested in learning about the safety and operational improvements that are, that'll be happening on the I-84 project. And then, uh, upcoming events and announcements, uh, the most-
That's usually, uh, my-
Oh, that's what you do?
Number eleven, well, it's on ten on the agenda.
I was gonna talk about the most anticipated event of the year coming up.
No, it's a different agenda, you can say them, that's fine, but it's a different agenda.
Go ahead.
Stepping on there.
Sorry.
No, that's fine.
That completes, uh, the town manager's report. I do have to answer any questions that the council had.
Shut down, okay. Thank you, Mr. Ledwith.
You're welcome.
That's great, no, now it's announcements number ten, so-
Okay.
Um, that's fine. Uh, I do want to just say one thing in the town manager's report, the flu is highly contagious, um, and, and particularly, um, severe this year, and the flu shot is not very effective, so make sure you wash your hands and, and be careful, you don't have to shake hands, you could just bump elbows, you know, all that. So it is, I have had, no, a, a number, a lot of feedback on how, how severe it is this year. So, um, transition planning meeting for special education adults, uh, education students, uh, January twenty-fourth, um, please join the West Hartford Sp, Special Education PTO and Pupil Services for their annual transition night of all grade levels on, uh, at seven PM at King Phillips School Library. Gretchen Nelson, Director of Pupil Services and school personnel, will discuss the transition process, programs available to students receiving special education service in preparation of entering a new school in fall twenty-eighteen. Steel Magnolias Girl Night Out, January twenty-fifth, grab a group of girlfriends and head to Playhouse on Park, uh, the pre-show reception starts at six-thirty, the show is at seven-thirty, and ticket prices range from thirty to forty dollars, uh, the, there are signature cocktail giveaway, free consultations and services by Park Road neighbors, the show runs through January twenty-eighth, for tickets or information, call the box office, eight-six-zero-five-two-three-five-nine-zero-zero, extension ten, or, or, uh, visit www/playhouseonpark.org. Uh, Mayor stated the town address Friday, January twenty-sixth, uh, that will be this Friday at the Delamar Hotel, uh, pre-registration is required, and that would be at the Chamber, um, website. West Hartford Senior Center Fitness Open House on January twenty-seventh, uh, there will be a drop-in and tryout of free class at, starting, well, at eight-thirty till eleven-thirty, Zumba, yoga, Ageless Grace, Silver Sneakers, there will be giveaways, prizes, healthy refreshments, and again, all free, and there will be a fitness membership signup with a first month for free. Call the West Hartford Senior Center, eight-six-zero-five-six-one-seven-five-eight-three, that would be better than CrossFit, I'm just saying. Clothing and household goods drive, Brawl, Safe Grad, Saturday, January twenty-seventh, everyone is invited to donate gently-used clothing and household items at the Hall High Safe Grad Fund Drive Campaign, um, from nine to one, in the parking lot near the tennis courts. The goal is to raise five thousand dollars to support the Ha, Hall High Safe Grad Party class of twenty-eighteen. Acceptable donations, clothing, shoes, accessories, bedding, linens, bath items, toys, household items, and books. Um, West Hartford A to Z Exhibit opens January thirty-first at the Noah Webster House and West Hartford Historical Society, it is a bold, colorful, interactive, whimsical exhibit showcasing over three-hundred years of life in town. The event is free and open to the public, admission to see the exhibit begins at six PM, followed with, by a lecture with Dr. Wilson, our town historian, at seven PM. And then Instrument Petting Zoo, Saturday, February third, uh, the Hartford Symphony Orchestra Family Series comes to Noah Webster House for a musical and instrument petting zoo, uh, it's a musical laboratory that gives children the opportunity to see, hear, touch, and play instruments, the program is free and open to the public. And there's, uh, Mr. Sweeney, joining us in person. Uh, with that, I'm done with announcements, is there anybody else that has any announcements? Mr. Barnes.
I do have one. Today is my mother-in-law's birthday, Grace Ellenberger, and she's actually one of the few people that actually watches our meetings, she likes to call me after and tell me how I did, usually when she disagrees with me, so just want to wish her a happy birthday, I've been trying to call you all day and, uh, your line's been busy, so, happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Many happy birthdays.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, I think you should, uh, at this point, I mean, discuss where you went today on behalf of our town, I think that's important for the community to, to hear about.
Thank you, Ms. Davidoff, I, uh, I spent the afternoon at the Financial Stability and Economic Growth Commission, um, I had, uh, this was a commission that was appointed, um, select, actually had self-started and then was given the authority by the governor to report back to the legislature on suggestions on how to improve Connecticut's economy, and they've done a lot of work in a very short period of time. I followed a CCM presentation, a COST presentation, which is the small-town, uh, advocacy group, and, uh, the CROG presentation, so it was a long afternoon, um, and I had prefaced it by a letter that went out to the council, um, and, uh, talking about issues that we faced, financial issues that we faced this year as a, as a region, uh, and then particularly as a town, there's not many towns like West Hartford, um, the size of West Hartford and that are not a city, uh, and especially in the greater Hartford area. So, um, anyway, it was a, a very good interactive session with, uh, many of the groups, by the time I got a chance to speak, they were pretty much done, but they listened and they actually did direct, uh, some questions through other people, um, directed it, including West Hartford. So, um, again, always educational and interesting, but, thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Uh, let's see, any other announcements? Um, I do want to just mention that we, we do have, um, a number of, a couple of dozen actually, of displaced families from Puerto Rico, uh, in the area, and, uh, there are , uh, people in the community that are helping in addition to the schools that are doing a remarkable job of, uh, of welcoming and, um, assimilating the students that have been, uh, that have been displaced, and wel, and really, I have heard only positive feedback in how these students are doing. Um, a couple of families do need or will be moving from the West Hartford Motor Inn into other locations, if you do know of affordable homes that are available for rent, um, or jobs in food service, especially if they are, uh, jobs that have, um, Spanish-speaking employees, employers there, like, um, certain cafes or bakeries that might, um, please let our social services know, our Renee McQ is, uh, is helping to, uh, to handle this as well. So, uh, tough road for a lot of families, and we're thinking about them and helping them in whatever way we can. All right, anything else?
Can I ask a question about that? I know that, um, at least a couple meetings back, we set up a commission or a committee to assist in, in the effort to, of the folks relocating or, or coming to, to West Hartford from Puerto Rico, do we know if the committee's up and running and whether they've been, uh, helpful?
So we, or, we did a resolution, uh, in the meantime, there was sort of this parallel pa, path, so we actually have a task force currently set up, that is, uh, that is functioning, it has Chief Allen, our fire chief, our, uh, the school, uh, population, our social services, uh, department, so is a, a very core group that has been involved when a family comes in and tra, helps to transition. They don't, um, they're, they can go so far, they can't necessarily go, uh, the next step, and many of the things that is handled, are handled in the task force are confidential. So there's a little bit more trouble transitioning to sort of the next step, so we're still struggling a little bit, I don't know if there are gonna be more families that are gonna be moving here, so we don't know whether we should be doing anything else, or we should just take a pause and figure out how to help the immediate need of these families and then figure out, you know, if we need to continue that or not, so. Uh, and these are short-term transitional services that really are to get them into a place where they are independent and, so. Anything else? All right, reports from Corporation Council, Mr. Alair.
I have no formal report, I'm happy to answer any questions, and there's no need of an executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Alair, is there any questions for Corp. Council? No, okay. Uh, with that, we will go to appointments, we have a few, um, and you have two reappointments, so if you don't mind, we'll move them all together, if that's okay. Uh, reappoint Josh Smilowitz to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term ending twelve-thirty-one twenty-two, uh, reappoint Richard Roberts to the Risk Management Advisory Board for a term ending twenty-thirty-one twenty-twenty, appoint Harriet Wenigrad to Veterans Commission for a term ending twen, twelve-thirty-one twenty-twenty, and appoint Tiffany Donaldson as town zoning alternate for a term ending twelve-thirty-one twenty-eighteen.
Very good, and we have two reappointments, Angelo Di Matteo as alternate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term ending twelve-thirty-one two thousand twenty-two, and Charles Shimkus to the Risk Management Advisory Board for a term ending twelve-thirty-one twenty-twenty.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, number thirteen, we're on consent, so we go to number nineteen, Ms. Kerrigan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I move that we, adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. No petitions, no executive session, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion carries, good night.
Thank you. Wow. Is that a record?[1771.86]